Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock. Shall we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Poland here. Hofstetter.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Kahn.
Here.
Hoffe. Shoemaker.
Here.
May we have a motion to excuse Kelly from tonight's meeting?
I so move.
Second.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kahn.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. As you all noticed, we have our new system up and running this evening for the first time. So any visitors that wish to address council, I ask you to approach the microphone, state your name, then you're more welcome to talk. With that being said, Ruth.
Okay, I'm gonna come over here and stand so I can see everyone's face. Okay, I'm wearing two.
Microphone.
Microphone. I'm wearing two really close.
Fairly, fairly close, yeah. You can move it over if you want.
Alright, I'm wearing two hats tonight. So my first hat is, I'm representing the Villas of Fire Ridge. We had our annual meeting two weeks ago, and we have some concerns. I said I would come to Village Council to share those concerns. So the first one, you probably can guess, is about the Little League Field lights. So they are left on often all night, and often the residents whose backs face Glen Drive end up calling the police, and they hate doing that all the time, and so the lights get left on all night. I know it's costly, so we actually am wondering if the lights could be put on a timer, or we have a resident who's volunteered to turn them off if someone would show him how to do that. So I'm leaving that up to you to figure out, but it's been an ongoing problem for years. It's not just this year. So that's why I think money could be saved. Does the village own it, or does the county own that park somewhere?
We do.
I thought you did. So I'm putting money back in the coffers. Okay, we also feel we have some major need for some kind of traffic control on Glen Drive. It is, and I know this is nothing new also, but we feel that the speeding and the amount of traffic has greatly increased, especially this year. A lot of people are using it as a cut through, I think, and we're talking sixty, seventy miles an hour. I mean, it's ridiculous, and we're really nervous about it because there's so many kids in the area, and the speeding even occurs during the Little League games. So it's not a safe situation, and I think we've been fortunate there hasn't been some kind of accident. I don't know whether we can put one of, we, you guys can put one of those, you know, speed signs up that, you know, clock your speed. I know there's money involved in that. I don't know if there are cameras. I'm just saying that I think it's a big issue. And then the last thing, and this is, I don't know how to address this. I'll leave it in your hands. Parking lot of the park is getting really sketchy as far as cars are there. It seems like all hours of the day. I get up really early and work out, and there are cars parked there. And late at night, there are cars parked there. So I'm just calling it to your attention. I don't know if there's anything unseemly going on, but it seems a little strange that there's that many people in the parking lot at different hours. So that is the Villas of Fire Ridge. Any questions?
I believe that with your speeding concern and the parking lot concern, Chief, I believe it'd just be a matter of some extra patrols throughout the area. Just more presence would, I think, would help with those situations.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Okay, so.
I'll check on what options we have for timer for the lights. If there's a way to make sure they're off.
Yeah, I think a timer would be an easy fix, actually.
How do they go on? Does somebody?
You manually.
If there's a baseball game, they go ahead and just flip the switch?
Just turns it on.
So it is just the league that is not turning them off when they're finished? Is that what's?
Well, it's not just league play. It's anybody that reserves the fields.
Okay.
I know. I have called the police department several times too, because I can see it from my back porch.
Okay. And we have people playing there until like eleven o'clock at night. So I mean, and I get that, but when they leave, the lights are on for hours after that. Okay, thank you. Okay, so my next issue is, I'm gonna bring some of you I don't know, and so I want to bring you up to speed a little bit. I want to talk about the Millersburg Design Guidelines, you know, for historic downtown Millersburg. And for those of you who don't know me, in about 2006, some business owners and some residents of Millersburg. A bite, sorry. They came to me. They came to me, and I'm just, by the door because it's not working right. I'm so high tech. And they asked me to lead an effort to bring Millersburg into being a Main Street community. And I thought that sounded like a great thing to do. And so I spent about a year and a half preparing it. I can't turn it off from there. I bet you're really impressed in a way.
They wouldn't know any African dances.
That's a rather unique ring.
I'm impressed, too. Well, okay. So it took about a year and a half to prepare all the information. We were accepted by Heritage Ohio interviewing the Main Street community. As you well know, it's historic downtown Millersburg, and I served as the Executive Director for the first year. Before I left my office, Heritage Ohio highly recommends that Main Street communities have a design guideline manual to protect the downtown, to protect the businesses, the signage, all of that. And so with, under the auspices of Heritage Ohio, I wrote those guidelines. And we had, and some of you may remember this, we had a very large, well-attended town hall meeting in the library. And lots of questions were asked, et cetera, et cetera. The village adopted those guidelines, sort of, and put them under the zoning. Am I correct about that?
It's a separate section, but yeah.
So if you go on the village website, you can pull up a twenty-nine-page document, which is, looks like this. Says Millersburg Design Guidelines Manual. Some of this is mine that I wrote, not mine, and some of it has been, was added to. I feel this document is unwieldy and confusing and not often clear. Also, under the website, you can find under the codified ordinances, chapter one, three, four, nine, Design District, Design Review Board, and this is the original under here. So when I look at our village and currently some of the signage, it doesn't meet the guidelines. And I am not sure what has happened, but I went through both of these. I documented every single line item where, and I'm sure you all know what I'm talking about, where that doesn't meet the guidelines. And one of the most important things, I think, that we should be aware of is on page seven of the big manual, it says, "What is the Design Review Board's role?" And underneath that, it says, "All changes to the exterior of a historic structure or site must be reviewed by the Design Review Board Board." All changes. That includes any painting on a sign, any signage. So I don't want to be judgmental about anything that's happened in the past, but I think it would serve our community really well if we could take these two documents, look at them, marry them, change them so they make sense and are easy to read for both the village building owners that fall in the historic downtown area and also the Design Review Board. So everyone is clear what their roles are and also what rules they need to follow going forward. So, and I am happy to help in any way, be a part of this, because I know it would be a lot of work in that area. So that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. If any of you have any questions or you'd like to see some of my information, I'm happy to share that. And I would like to know what, oh, one other thing I would like to say is, the big manual, this one, has no penalties or remedies in it at all. The, this one does have penalties and remedies, up to a thousand dollars a day. And your zoning board, I think you have penalties up to two hundred and fifty dollars a day, something like that.
Yeah.
So they're there. I just think that our building owners may not be aware of all of this, or may not have taken the time to look at it, or however, again, I'm not pointing fingers, but I think we need, going forward, we want to make a wonderful first impression. And the last thing I want to say is, the College of Worcester did a survey last year of how many people come into Holmes County annually. Minimum, two point five million people come through our county. And a lot of those people come here, and the financial, financial amount that they bring into the county, and a lot of that comes to Millersburg now, is low end a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, high end half a billion dollars. We, because of our astute and social media savvy, store owners have a huge social media presence nationally now. And I think Lena might have an international presence. So when these people come here, we want to welcome them by having appropriate signage and building supplies. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, my Hannah.
Okay, so I'm Renna Marby. I've been here twice now for my Eagles Town project. Just to introduce myself. I have some paperwork to go over, the budget that I have on my project, because it's changed since the last time we met, and to talk about the donations that I've raised. So in the past two months now, I have worked to raise thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Fifteen thousand that came from Bill Baker, who now has naming rights of the amphitheater, so we call it Timothy Baker Amphitheater. And then twenty-four thousand, five hundred and five dollars, I mean, some cents, comes from my block sales. So I have a written-down budget of how much the project can cost, and then a drawing of the amphitheater at the back as well. Hey, you know, I'll swap one. You're a spot for this one. Great, so as you can see on there, there's a written-down budget of how much it's gonna cost. And recently, I've had to, so I got volunteer excavators, and we've wanted to do it for about two thousand, five hundred dollars. And that comes with no cost of the actual excavator itself, because I believe Trenchless Guys is donating it. And so we're gonna have the excavator for a couple days, and Joel Minuway, I'm gonna head and already started dating it. So my excavator, you can go ahead and finish that, and the Freiburg excavator is gonna come in for timing materials. So as you'll see on there, it's an estimated cost of how much Freiburg will cost. Because it's timing materials, I can't be, they can't be exactly how much it's gonna cost, but hitting around that would be a safe number. And also, they're gonna come in, place the block for it, and they're also gonna place the drainage for it as well. And then afterwards, we're gonna have creative parts kits come in and do the stage.
I gotta say, I'm very impressed with the, with the fund, with the fundraising you've done in such a short period of time. That's very impressive. With that being said, you know, council had committed a month ago to helping with this project. Is council still willing to proceed with that?
Yep.
Yeah, I believe so.
And what dollar amount would you?
What was, what was the total amount, Karen, that we had?
I feel comfortable with what we didn't spend on the flower baskets because of them deteriorating so bad. Thirteen thousand?
And that number hasn't changed? Still going to go up to thirteen?
So it looks like, right, see, you're still about fourteen eight short.
Well, if you, yes. Right now, I'm currently fourteen, fourteen feet tall.
I'll make a motion to move forward. Running the project for thirteen thousand.
I'll second it.
And that's, that price right there is currently about electricity to it. Nate, previously mentioned that you guys are looking to provide electricity to the pavilion that's already up there. So I figured if you guys were gonna do that, we could possibly just break it down in the amphitheater. I figured that wouldn't be a part of my project unless you guys already set it up.
Yeah, I was gonna check and see what that would cost us to have. I think we're probably gonna have to have a new service established at that end of the park anyway, rather than running from the concession stand all the way down. Make more sense to, and you know, we could put some lighting down, down there around the pavilion, which would help with some security issues as well, light that up.
That's great.
It wouldn't be a bad idea anyways. On a timer, exactly.
How much were your brick pavers?
Uh, brick pavers?
Yeah, what, what was the amount for that?
All, all them together?
Per brick.
Per brick. Oh, per brick? It was one fifty for a four-by-eight, and then it was one seventy-five for a four-by-eight with a symbol, and then it was two fifty for an eight-by-eight, three hundred for an eight-by-eight with a symbol, and then five hundred for a small guy.
Okay, we'll talk. I wanna get one. I'm not sure what.
So how many total bricks did you end up selling?
Uh, about sixty-two.
Okay.
And how many more do you need to sell? Are you?
I'm done with that.
You're, you're done with that?
Yeah, because I had to go ahead and submit my orders, so they'll come in by October seventh.
Okay.
So they can go ahead and be placed on the stage now.
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor for, in a second, for the thirteen thousand. Vaughn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Kahn.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
So hopefully that does get you one step closer to your final goal.
Hopefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors that wish to address council?
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
So based on what I talked about, if someone could get back to me while I have an idea of what happens?
Yeah, can I follow up with you?
Absolutely.
And we'll, we'll talk.
Thank you, Nate. I appreciate that.
Oh, also, I have a lot on my mind. I think it's not anything too important. So just so you guys know, the project is looking to be finished in the middle of October. I have the stage set up for beginning of October, and that should be the last thing going soon.
Thank you.
And that was on the previous location? The location wasn't changed, then, right?
No, the location actually was changed since the disc golf made.
Pardon?
The location has been changed since the disc golf made, came in and suggested the location, and we decided there's a better location. So it's now closer to the pavilion on the left side of the parking lot, by degrees.
Okay.
I, I have a question regarding this. So who's gonna manage the bookings or the rental or the? Because it'll be turned over to you all.
Yeah, it'll be ours to, we'll, we'll have to figure that out.
Would that be somebody you could put on the village schedule?
We could, yeah. Yep. I, I envision, I mean, we had talked, like, the Home Center for the Arts. I'm hoping they do a lot of the.
Entertaining.
I'm not a talent booker. I hope they, I hope they kinda take that over.
Yeah.
And then work through us to, you know, reserve it or whatever. I think that makes sense.
Alright, thank you. Maybe we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kahn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections? You have a motion to pass.
Make a motion to pass, Kahn.
Shoemaker, I second.
Kahn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Thank you. Bill Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-one. They questioned all the bills this evening. Do you have a motion to pass? Second.
Second, Kahn.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kahn.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief.
I do not have anything.
Thank you. Nate.
We'll have to get him a wireless lapel mic. I just want to let you know the Planning and Zoning Commission met last week. They denied the variance for the tiny house at three forty-three North Ranch Street, and then they approved a lot split request for the two lots on South Monroe Street.
Nate, why did they deny it?
The, the consensus of the group, the request was for a three-hundred-ish square foot tiny house. Previously, the smallest they'd approved was six hundred, give or take a little bit, a little over six hundred square feet. They just felt it was way too small for a dwelling unit. The minimum is twelve hundred square feet in the district, so that's quite a drastic reduction in size. The, the applicant was, was here and was open to considering going larger. This was just a specific model he had found that that was the size of it, so it was a pre-manufactured unit. Resurfacing, I did talk to Melway today. They're, they've been delayed with, they're working on an ODOT project in the eastern half of the county and have run into hurdle after hurdle on that job, so that's delayed our project. He's hoping to be in here next week, but depends how this finishes out, of course. Our sidewalk project, all, all the right-of-way acquisition agreements have been accepted. In the, in the midst of everything happening, though, with best housing, transferring ownership, selling, we had previously had an agreement with Lings on the parcels, and then they sold before the right-of-way acquisitions were recorded. So we have to, we've got the checks back from, for the Lings settlement, and it'll now be made out to the new owners of the property. Just, there's, there's no changes, just name only. Have to get it in the current ownership, so. Uh, the fourth one was paid last, last week, I believe, so. Uh, nothing on the demolition or lighting projects. Waiting on those. We, we were notified through the county EMA that our, everybody in the county, their applications, we didn't meet the, there's a state threshold for disaster declaration. Holmes County didn't meet that level. They were, they said they'd look at other avenues for funding sources, but I'm not real optimistic. I think it's just what it is. It's over, so we'll move on. As the mayor said, we are trying out the new AV system tonight. Hopefully, it's working. We'll find out. If not, we're doing the old method too as a backup plan, so one way or the other, we'll get it working. Personnel, we've got two resignations out at the street department. On August thirtieth, Tyler White submitted his resignation. He got an offer from a mechanic shop for quite a bit more money. So he, he was, I asked, you know, could we get a two-week notification? And he said they offered him a dollar fifty more to start the following week. I said, "Well, do what you gotta do. I understand." So he, he left September second. And then Andy Zollers has submitted his resignation. He'll be leaving Friday. It's his last day with us. I want to thank him for all his hard work, the last almost four years.
Yes.
About right. And previous time before that even. Appreciate all your efforts and everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
And I'd like to have a motion to accept those resignations.
Second.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Kahn.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
One, I did talk to Kelly. She called me today to let me, or to ask me to let you guys know. Uh, she's been in contact with the company that did the training center playground, if you remember back to our talks about Airport Park. There's a, she was talking to a rep out of, I believe, Michigan, but there's one, there's a guy in Akron that works for that rep, that she's gonna set up a meeting with her and I to meet on-site with that guy. He'll take some measurements, come up with some different ideas and, you know, levels of things we could do, and then we'll set up a meeting, or we'll have them come to a council meeting to present any options that they come up with, see if that's something we want to pursue through, like, major works grants or something like that. And then I do have one item under Personnel for Executive Session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen.
You should have received the August financial statement. There's the acknowledgement sheet. Our Alt Care Medical and Dental Insurance will renew January one. And I had a conversation last week with them, actually, two weeks ago. They're wondering if we want to start the renewal process using FormFire. FormFire, if anyone's familiar with it, is a process that every employee has to go online and fill out all their medical information, and then they can submit that out to numerous companies to get quotes. Or we can simply wait until we get the renewal from Alt Care, which probably is gonna be, I don't know, they're thinking the first part of October. If we don't do the FormFire right now and wait on the renewal, we're going to be, and if you want to look at other options, we're gonna be down to about a week, week and a half, where we can get the medical portion filled out from all the employees on the FormFire, which isn't a problem. We've done it before. A lot of times, the employees will come in here and we have to help them with it because they don't have a computer at home or they're not sure what to fill out and what section, so. I just need what, some guideline, what you guys think we ought to do. Go ahead and start the FormFire or just wait on the renewal? Previous years, our renewal came in at zero percent and then one percent, and I think last year it was four, which is unheard of, so. I have no idea what the rates will come at at this time. They don't even have a good feeling on that yet, so.
I mean, anytime that we've looked in the past and gone outside of our current carrier, they haven't even been close on rates. I mean, that.
Because basically, they're looking, because they're looking at the Affordable Care Act plans, which that's what we would have to go with. If we leave Alt Care, we're still in the traditional relief plan. If we leave Alt Care, we're done with the traditional plans. We're gonna have to go to an ACA plan, which typically has been higher, so.
So have they just been extending that?
They just keep extending it.
A year at a time and?
Yep, and it's extended through twenty twenty-three right now, so.
To, to me, it sounds, it seems like an unnecessary hassle, making the employees go through that for knowing that it is probably not going to even be close, the rates that we get back from outside.
That would be my recommendation, to wait and see what the rates come in at. Like I said, we'll still have a week and a half or so that we could jump on that if we need to. If the rates come in really high, then maybe look, but that's my opinion.
I agree.
So everybody's in agreement? Just wait for the rates to come in?
Yes.
Okay. And just seeing if you guys are still okay with, we start putting an ad out for my replacement. My intentions right now are to finish this term out, which would be March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. I can't really say for sure that I won't run again, but I don't know that. Or I might decide to leave earlier than that. But right now, my intentions are to stay through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. With that being said, I think we really need to start looking and get someone in here to give them a year, year and a half to, to train.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So if you guys are okay with that, Nate and I will get together and work out an ad to put out. Are we gonna have to do the, because in the personnel policy, it says you have to average, or you have to post it internally for ten days.
Yeah.
So even though it's elected position, it's not gonna be an elected, we're just hiring somebody. So we should post that for ten days, correct?
Right, I think so.
Okay. So we'll do that and then we'll put the ad out.
How are you gonna do that, Karen, as far as the ad? Where are you gonna place the ad?
Well, I thought we'd probably put it in the Bargain Hunter, which we did before. We'll put it on our Facebook page, on our website.
Okay.
And kind of see what we get from that. I can also put it on, I belong to the High Municipal Clerks Association. And anybody that has signed up to be on their email list, which there's numerous, it goes out to everybody. I think you can even do a free ad on the High Municipal League's website, classified ads, so.
Okay.
But we'll get it out there. The other item is, you see in your packet, we got another request for a liquor license transfer, a Trex transfer. Bob can, we talked today, Bob can kind of fill you in on what's going on with that process.
The Trex is for spare time lanes, which you're probably all familiar with, the spare time lanes. They've never had a liquor license, they've never sold anything down there. The reason being, there's a deed restriction that restricts the owner from selling any alcoholic beverages. So I called the attorney today and asked him what he was gonna do about the deed restriction. He didn't even know about the deed restriction. And here's the thing about deed restrictions. They're up to the people that are affected to enforce the deed restriction. So I talked to Jeff today, and I use Rustic Acres as an example. There's a deed restriction in all of Rustic Acres that you can't have an outbuilding. So if somebody put an outbuilding in there, it would be up to one or more of the residents of Rustic Acres to file a lawsuit to enjoin them from having an outbuilding. The same would hold true of this deed restriction. Only this would fall to the heirs of the original grantor, who I believe is Harry Logston, and it was many years ago, it was fifty or more years ago. So it's not our issue as far as the Trex coming in. It's not a basis to deny a Trex. But I just wanted to mention that to you in case one of the relatives does take issue and file a lawsuit. And somebody might say, well, how did the village approve this Trex? Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's not our issue. It's the heirs of Harry Logston's issue. So, and it's a shame to me, all the different places that have a liquor license, that Spare Time Lanes hasn't had a liquor license. They, as you might know, they allow people to bring in their own liquor to drink while they're bowling. So the fact that it's being sold as opposed to people bringing it in is a distinction without a difference. And I know that the previous owners really struggled financially because, I don't know how much money you make from, you know, renting lanes and renting shoes and that sort of thing. So I just mention that because I don't want you to be blindsided by somebody down the line, what, how did you approve this Trex? If you do decide to approve it.
And this isn't for the actual license. This is just allowing them to Trex it in, get notice, notification. What, if that is approved and once that paperwork gets done by them, then we'll get an actual notice of the liquor license transfer, which then you'll have to decide whether you want to hear it or not.
And the liquor board is the one, they make sure that the new owner, the person applying for it, complies with all the criteria. For instance, you can't have a felony conviction, you can't have a conviction for any offense that might indicate that you are not going to comply with the liquor laws in your establishment, that sort of thing. So it's primarily the liquor board's responsibility to do that. Although if we have local knowledge, that, let's say, somebody owned a bar here in town and they wanted to open up a new establishment and get a new liquor license, and we knew that they did not enforce the liquor license, or they allowed fights to occur at their establishment all the time, then we could indicate that to the liquor board, which could persuade them not to allow the Trex.
I'll make a motion to grant the opportunity, you know, to try.
No second. Everyone else in town has it?
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Colin.
No.
Okay, and the other item I have is our debt service fund for the wastewater treatment plant. Our last payment on that loan will be December of twenty twenty-four, I believe. Actually, it's due January second, but we pay it early, so. Yeah, it'll be paid December of twenty twenty-four. With the funds that we currently have in the debt service fund, we're getting real close to having enough to pay that loan off. As, once we get through this next billing cycle, those bills will be due October twenty-fifth. Once the money comes in from that debt service, that billing, we should have probably somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars left in that fund.
Are we allowed to pay it off early?
Yes and no.
Okay.
We can, but I talked to them, the OWDA. If we send them, just say we would send them a check for the balance of the loan, they're gonna hold that in escrow and pull from that escrow twice a year when those payments are due. Because they have, they have had a, they sell bonds to do the loans for different entities, so they can't pay it off early. We, in a sense, could give them the full amount that's due, but then they're gonna disperse it the same time we would. My thinking is, why give them the money then upfront? Because we're drawing interest. So I'll still make the payments twice a year. But you need to decide what you want to do as far as the bills that are going out to the individuals. Because I don't want to keep collecting that money into that debt service fund, because then we're gonna have a surplus. See what I'm saying? So it's just something to think about. Nate and I are gonna, tried to do that here recently, but things aren't working out, our schedules, but. I do have some preliminary numbers that I got from Mary on what we're bringing in per quarter. How many accounts are at the forty-five dollars? How many are at the ninety? How many are at one eighty and how many are three sixty a quarter? So we'll get, Nate and I will get together and get some numbers and then. Information to think about what you want to do as far as reducing the debt service fee on the bills. Doing away with it completely, putting so much into the RNI funds, you know, the options you have. But that's gonna be your decision here in the next month or two. We're gonna need to know what you want to do by probably November. Because when those bills go out at the end of December, that has to have that, your decision on there. So that's, it's good news that we're paying it off early. And the reason for that was because it was all estimated when we first took that loan out. Well, since then, we've had numerous buildings, housing. The debt service for each unit, they've gotten more than what we anticipated way back then, so obviously that, those funds are growing, so. But I wanted you to be aware that we're, after this quarter, we're good.
And it's great to be in this situation versus the opposite.
Right, than having to go back and say, we need more money.
Yeah.
You gotta give credit to the group that put these numbers together twenty-seven years ago to get us to this. I just, when I heard this, I was surprised that we're two years ahead.
To get it to be within one year of accurate, you know, that, good guess.
Do you have any information on, like, expect them to see the plan or is there a plan that either the committee or we need to be looking at for?
Capacity-wise, we're about half capacity, or based on our average daily flow, we're roughly half capacity. Obviously, individual components have been and will continue to need to be replaced. Yeah, if we were, you know, seventy-five percent, eighty-five percent of that capacity, I'd be, I think we would have been having discussions long before now that, about needing to do something.
Any major projects that we should be looking at? I mean, it was talked about infiltration going through the?
Yeah, there's items like that that we need to be addressing. The I and I is a huge issue throughout town. Another, another thing we've talked about is the ability to handle our own sludge. If we can get away from contracting out part or, well, I don't think we can ever get away from all of it, but if we could get away from, if we, you know, if we had a press on-site to where we could press out of our digesters, de-water the sludge, get it ready for them, it'd be far cheaper for them to just transport and dispose of it. Currently, we, you know, bring acre sludge in, they press for days, week, about a week at a time, several times per year. If we could cut part of that out by having our own press, it may be cost-effective to look at that. Things like that. But as far as, you know, actual rehab or replacement of components, there's nothing major at this point.
There's still plenty of infrastructure that needs work.
Yeah, yeah, system, water and sewer, system-wide, I, yeah, there's always needs there. Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm gonna make a shout-out, and I've done this before. Kevin Vaughn, you know, who everybody knows was the utilities superintendent until last year, but. Worcester has the same system, same design as we do. They had to put, and the system that was designed did not work, and there was a lawsuit over it, and Worcester won millions of dollars in the settlement. But they had to put nine million dollars into their system and to, so that they could meet the EPA requirements. Kevin figured out a way to manipulate our present system, the way it was built, so that we could meet EPA regulations and without putting any money into the system. So I think that was a big factor too, because we would, but for that, we would be putting a lot of money into the plant.
Anything else, Karen?
No, I think that's it, that's all. Thank you.
If you want to, you guys want to schedule a public horse committee to discuss what our next steps will be for this?
I think we had to come, you know, a plan.
That's what I'm saying. We'd schedule, which is Bob, Brad, Devon, Tom. Something you want to schedule?
That's my thought was, do you want to hammer out all the details in a committee meeting?
Right, yeah. Well, I think we can have some open discussion there with Nate there in the most formal setting.
I'm completely open.
Something you want to schedule for like a middle walkover?
Is that? Is that gonna be pushing for a decision?
Well, they're gonna have to do, pass legislation then to change how the debt service is going, where it's going, or if they're gonna get rid of it, so.
Probably a little sooner than that would be better.
Last week of September?
I won't be here, but I don't have to be. It can decide.
Talking the twenty-sixth?
We can do that because, I mean, right now, we're still, this is the only meeting for this month.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do on the twenty-sixth at six o'clock?
Yeah, if we're gonna do six o'clock, I won't schedule anything.
Ten twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Nine twenty-six, oh.
Yeah, September twenty-sixth at six.
And this is just a committee meeting? Because I'm gonna need to advertise it.
Public Horse Committee. Bobby, other than this? All right, with that, let's discuss our time and date for future council meetings for the balance of the year, starting October. I'm gonna go back to the second and fourth Monday at seven PM.
Second and fourth at six.
Six still causes me conflict at times. I'm sorry.
I'm just, it's okay, Tom.
I'm okay with going back to the original time, second, fourth, two days a month, sound?
Okay. So starting in October, we'll go back to two meetings a month for the balance of the calendar year. All right, we'll have emergency ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh two by title only. An ordinance admitting section one eighty-five point zero two, the village ordinances and declaring emergency. Are there any questions?
What, what led to this?
The, and the original legislation did not state that the bed tax is three percent.
Okay.
The, our original legislation did. When it got codified into the codified ordinances, and we changed the percentage of what group got what they left out to three percent, that the actual tax rate was. And we got an email from someone, I don't even know if he was in the state. He was researching something and brought it to our attention, so.
But a very polite manner.
Yeah.
I would consider it a typo because when, when Walter Drain gets our legislation and they put it in the codification book, and they just misunderstood what our intentions were and left out the four percent.
Three.
Three percent.
The three percent, they left out the three percent and just put in how it was to be distributed. And we didn't catch it whenever, you know, it was codified. And then somebody from outside caught it, and it's like, yeah, it needs to be in there.
And with the proliferation of Airbnb's all over the village springing up, I mean, it's probably good to have it as clearly stated as possible for their purposes, so that they know exactly what's going on.
And they are working, currently working on our codification for this year, so I contacted them and they're, they have pretty much everything ready to go, but they're waiting till I call them tomorrow to make sure that you guys chose to pass this. So it will be included in this codification.
So maybe have a motion to suspend the second, third reading?
Second.
Colin.
Hi.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Khan.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
You have motion to pass.
Second, Khan.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Khan.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Colin.
Hi.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Thank you.
So just out of curiosity, the guy who brought it to our attention, as far as we know, has no actual connection with anything to do with our ordinances or anything, like it's not going to affect anything?
He was researching bed tax stuff, different communities and.
Interesting. Good Samaritan.
All right, we'll have first reading, a resolution accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission to authorize the necessary tax levies and certify them to the county auditor. Any questions? Maybe we have a motion to suspend the second, third reading?
I so moved, Shoemaker.
Okay.
Sound good.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hopstetter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
You have a motion to pass?
So moved.
Second.
Hopstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Thank you.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports? Old business. New business?
I'll consider this new business. I guess the fire department had a memorial service yesterday?
Yeah, a stair climb, yes.
Yeah, was it, any notification went out on that or?
It was on their social media, I hadn't seen it prior, I don't know, the week.
I mean, they've been doing that now for the past few years.
I didn't know anything about it, I would have liked to go out there, my sister told me about it.
Any other new business? If not, maybe we have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of public employee or official.
Second.
Poland?
Aye.
Hopstetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Thank you. Andy, good luck.
Hey Melissa, push that red button.